Hey, everybody. Hey Lynn. Hi Lauren. Lynn, can you hear me okay? Can you both hear me okay? I'm doing a test with a new microphone. How is everybody? I'm gonna unmute everybody for a second. There we go. How is everybody?
Doing well. Ignore my husband.
I'll ignore your husband if you ignore my kids in the background.
Because I couldn't sleep.
Because my wife rang at the house. She had college classes that she missed. You're still all right? Who's the damn dog? Look at that. I'm gonna kill Delta.
I am. There we go. Hey, Bronwyn! How are you? Hold on, I gotta, I think I have to unmute you. There we go. There she is. Hi Becky! I thought I unmuted everybody. Apparently not. Hold on one second.
Hey!
There we go. Hi, how's everybody?
Hi. My volume went down.
Lynn.
Hey Lynn, how are you?
Fine. Trying to get the sound right on. Do you hear me?
We can, yeah. We can hear you.
Okay.
Becky, you're back in the bakery?
Yeah, I'm answering all the emails about refunds.
Oh. That sounds like a great time.
Fantastic. I've got this nice spreadsheet going.
Oh.
The deposit was given. Is it paid in full? How much are we giving back? Did we mail the check?
Oh, my goodness.
Whatever. How are you guys handling all this?
We've been mailing some refunds, but I think I've only had to mail four checks back at this point. Most of them have delayed the wedding, so they're still gonna do them, so they weren't asking for their money back.
A lot of the refunds we did were that very first week, you know, and then we closed the month of April, too. So, there's no, we do specialty cakes where large groups are gathered. There's no reason to stay open. Fran will be listening in in the back. We're doing our social distancing.
I think we have about four or five that should be joining us, and then we can get started.
Cool. Do you want us to mute our microphones?
You know what? Once we get started, I'll mute everybody.
Okay.
But for now, and I think this will be a nice, smaller group, which I think should be way more manageable. We, we'll just kind of play it by ear, but at the moment, I think we had about 10 registers, so that's perfect. That's like a great number for me, so. I think we only have about five or six online right now, so. I have a new headset, and I'm very aware of how loud I'm breathing, so tell me. If it's too loud.
You're brutal. I'll let you know, Bernadette.
I'm like...
Has anybody done any virtual consultations yet?
I've been doing them for a while.
Yeah.
I love them.
I think it's the way of the future.
I know it is.
Welcome in, everybody. They will give us just a few more minutes, and then we'll get started. And in the chat box to the right of your screen, if you just wanna tell us who you are and where you're from, that would be great, and we can all kind of see where everybody's at. And then we'll just give it a few more minutes. We'll give it three more minutes. Lauren, you're at Nona Bakery?
Yes.
Very good. I think we have a certified baker at your bakery. Is that correct?
He was. He relocated. He moved to Atlanta. So now, he's actually a salesman.
Very good. He did well on that test, I remember.
Oh, yeah. He was great.
Exciting.
We miss him. He was a great guy.
Ah, very good.
Amy, click at the bottom, and they join with audio. The bottom left. You see the microphone? There's an arrow up. Click that.
Hey, there's people in the background.
We all have people in the background. It's no big deal.
Feels the need to talk, because I keep telling him not to.
I'm not gonna see you.
Hi Paul! So I think we're good to go. We have, we have a smaller group today, and I was just saying that I think that's a good manageable size. So I hope you feel the same as I do, because I think this is perfect. I think it'll be a better discussion. And for those that don't know me on the call, my name is Bernadette. I'm the Director of Operations for the Retail Bakers of America. Thank you all for being on our weekly town hall meeting. And today, we're gonna pass it right over to Ms. Bronwyn, and Bronwyn will talk to us a little bit about what she's already doing, which kind of works out very well for us, about doing online consulting, seeing as nobody can be in the bakeries these days, or it's a little different dynamics. So Bronwyn, I'm gonna pass it right over to you. I am gonna mute everybody's line except for Bronwyn. So, if you have a question, just raise your hand or send us a chat, and we can unmute you. Okay?
Just a little background. I have been selling wedding cakes for... Forever. Yeah. Gosh, since I was a child, it feels like. Anyway, things have changed over the years. And up until, I would say, January last year, I was at Frosted Our Bakery, which was a really big bakery. And we did consultations, and they were an hour long, and the bakery had such a long history that nobody wanted to change the way we did anything. And it was so frustrating to me, because I felt like spending an hour with every person, regardless of whether they book or not, was such a waste of time and money. You know, and there's already such a little bit of profit on a wedding cake, that I felt like we have to cut where we need to cut. So my goal in going virtual was to make more money, to completely cut service out of it, to make it more convenient for everybody. And also, because in my older years, I'm getting a little more selfish, and I decided that I didn't wanna work a million hours a week. And so, I wanna be able to meet with a bride whenever she wants to meet, but then I wanna be wherever I am, and not at the bakery. You know, I can be in my living room. I can be anywhere, and that's the best part. So I can schedule appointments when I'm traveling. I can schedule appointments whenever. Now, when I first started to do it, which was just in the fall last year, people thought I was crazy, and everybody said to me, "That's never gonna work." That's, no brides are gonna do that. No, it's never gonna work. But I felt like with change, you know, nobody hates the first guy, I mean, everybody hates the first guy, right? But that second guy is a genius, right? But nobody, nobody really kind of backed me on it. I felt, you know, they kept asking me, "Well, what are you doing? Why, why would you not wanna meet with them? You know, the brides are gonna feel like they're missing something." And then the big question they asked me was, "Well, how are you gonna deal with tastings?" Well, I don't know about y'all, but I got real tired of watching people eat cake in front of me, right? I mean, for 15 years, I watched people eat cake in front of me. I'm so tired of that. So I wanted to change that, too. I mean... And so, I did. And I also wanted to change, we never charged for tastings before, and I always felt like we are giving too much away in our industry already. And so I felt like free samples was kind of a ridiculous thing. And so I wanted to charge for them, but I also wanted to do them on my own time. Because the hard part about doing samples and doing consultations every day is that you have to have cake that's fresh for everybody at all, all times. So I, I thought about it, and I thought, well, how, what is the best way to do it? Well, to have every other week to make samples, to keep them frozen, to package them properly. And just so you know, we are baking, scratch baking, so they don't last as long in the freezer as a, as a mix would. But then I thought, well, every other week, and then if people buy them online on our website, then we can deliver them, and then we can charge for the samples, but it would really be for the delivery, because people are already used to paying for delivery for everything. And even before this happened, but now, so, I mean, people are paying to get everything delivered. I mean, everything. So now, I mean, what we started with, and I probably will increase it ultimately, is $25 for six pieces of cake. And I don't have a box here at home, but it's about, oh, let me just share the screen. And pull it up. Let's see. So this is my, can y'all see that? So this is my sample box, and I make them buy it online. So when people email me, I direct them, I send them the link for this. You know, and you can add on, I figured with one, we're not gonna make any money. It's not gonna be profitable. But I made it tempting to buy two, and so you get two for 40, and everybody buys two, because nobody wants... I mean, if you give them the option between one and two, people always seem to pick two, which is funny. So we're getting $40 for a sample that we deliver on our own time. And so what I do is I, and I tell them, "I'm gonna call you," and how it works is I'm gonna arrange delivery within 30 miles of the bakery. And then if you're not within 30 miles of the bakery, then we can meet. But somebody in the family is gonna be within 30 miles of the bakery, you know? Because I'm within 30 miles of downtown, and I'm within 30 miles of Fort Worth, and I'm within 30 miles of everywhere here. So it works out. But then I schedule them all on the same day. And so, you know, there's 10, 12, 15 deliveries, and then now, it's perfectly acceptable to drop something off on somebody's porch, and I'm glad now that that has become the norm, and now you can just ditch it and go. Yay! Anyway. Does anybody have questions about that sampling? I mean, people really thought I was crazy, but now, I mean, it's still, we're still selling samples during this time, and I still only have to bake once every other week. I know, it's, it's weird. And people, the appointments go really well. People book the appointment online. I put it on my website. So now, instead of the 15 emails back and forth, "Oh, Wednesday's not good. How about Thursday?" "Oh, no, not, not Thursday." So now they just go, and then they book it online. She said, "Are they predetermined flavor combos?" I always stress to every single person, sorry, that when you do a tasting, you are doing a tasting to determine the quality of the baker, not, sorry, my dog, not to determine whether you like raspberries or not, because up until this point in your life, you probably have determined that already. And usually, everybody laughs, blah, blah, blah. And I give them a couple choices, because people like choices. So on that website, you can, there's a couple dropdown menus that say, "Do you like raspberries?" "No, I hate raspberries. Don't let them touch my cake." Or, "Do you want sprinkles and added fun?" "No, I hate fun. No fun." You know, so I give them a couple choices that are fun, but really, it's whether I add the raspberry. So I usually just make one with raspberries and one without. And then I eat the rest, because you're always gonna have extras of those two that, you know, that you have to make extras. So I make, I don't let them choose. No longer am I saying, "Oh, yeah, I'm gonna bake you something with goat cheese and thyme." No. If you wanna goat cheese thyme cake, then you can pay me to make you one, and I will make you one. But no, I'm not gonna make you one for a sample. Forget it. If you like goat cheese and thyme, then you'll probably like a goat cheese and thyme cake, you know? I'm getting meaner with my old age, but I do it with a smile, so people are okay with it, you know? But, okay, let me talk about the Zoom meetings. Now, the only people, which is funny, that have kind of struggled with doing Zoom are the mothers of the brides, and of course, they're the ones with the wallets, right? They're the ones usually paying. But they always say, "Well, we, we can't meet in person. Can't we meet in person?" And I always say, "Do you know, it's so difficult these days with everybody's schedule. You know, your daughter's gonna be somewhere, and, you know, the fiancee's gonna be somewhere else, and even if we're all in different cities, we can still meet." And so, they can pick the appointment online, but if I'm in person, or if I'm on the phone with them, I can open up my Google Calendar, and I can click on an appointment, and then I can add their email in and make it a Zoom meeting. It's so simple. It's so simple. And then they get it, the invite, and then they just click it. I mean, we all clicked on it to get onto this meeting. It's the same thing, but it's just so easy. The only thing that you have to remember is to allow Zoom to access your calendar. Now, some people are scared about Zoom. I know they just got in trouble with security, because, you know, people were jumping in with lewd comments and lewd pictures. "Well, nobody has ever joined my consultations." You know, I'm almost bummed about that. It would be very exciting, but nobody has ever, I've never had any problems with it. I use the free version. You can buy a version, but the only difference really that affects me is the time limit. I can only do a 45-minute meeting. But I have yet to have a consultation that goes longer than that, which is nice, because they used to be an hour. And so now, I feel like I can get done with a consultation in 20 minutes, which is perfect. That's everybody's patience level, I feel like. And people are usually prepared, which is really nice, because then they can show me pictures. I mean, you can see, I mean, you can see pictures on Zoom. It's pretty easy, you know, and if there's, usually you don't meet with nine, 12 people, so. When they hold something up, you really can see it. So usually, they'll show me pictures. If they're kind of savvy, then they'll screen, they'll share the screen and show me a bunch of pictures, or show me their Pinterest page. Not everybody is very tech savvy, and believe me, I am not. I mean, I am still number two pencil, and here's some blank paper. That's still how I do it. Even though right here is a very fancy iPad with the drawing, I can't, uh-uh, no. But this, I mean, it really... I can't see any downside to it, honestly, especially now. It makes complete sense now, and people are jumping on board, and I'm so excited, and I really hope for our industry that we don't go back to the other. I mean, I don't need to have a showroom. Why would I have a showroom? You know, I can show them pictures. I can put those pictures online. People don't necessarily wanna come in anymore. Millennials are very much, "I want it now, and I want it on my schedule." I do not, you know what? I... Okay. Somebody asked about scheduling appointments. So my website is very low-key. We did it ourselves. It's on GoDaddy, using GoDaddy, and it's, it's very simple to add that feature. And it's kind of, it's kind of neat. And then people can access my calendar. So if you look at, if I, you know, if I don't want people to make appointments while I'm doing something, then I just write stuff, or things, or nada. I'm busy, you know? I just make up fake appointments in that calendar that I share. You know, that's not my everything calendar, but it's the calendar that people can make appointments. And I'll make appointments later. You know, I used to, used to have to, on Saturday, meet every half an hour between, between nine and three, and then after that, I was, you know, delivering, or, you know, fixing chaos problems at the bakery or whatever. But now, it's, it's easier for everybody, because I, I can meet with you till seven, usually, or on, from 10 to seven. But I don't always get the evening appointments. Well, now, not, because everybody's at home. Bernadette said, "Can you walk us through the online consult?" So the first thing I do in a consult is make everybody feel comfortable, and how you do that is just let them talk. Ask them about their wedding. Ask them about the dress. Ask them anything, and then they start getting comfortable. Oh, my gosh. And then, it's just, it just gets easier from, from there, when they loosen up, because sometimes, you know, they'll be on it, it's their first meeting, and they're like this, or, you know, it's all, it's all crazy, and they're nervous. So I just get them talking about their wedding, and every single bride is the same. They wanna tell you about their dress, and they wanna tell you about their flowers, and they wanna tell you about that. You know, it's the same everywhere, every bride. It's, it's the same. So that's what I do first, just to make them feel comfortable. Then I ask them the basic questions, and then ask them what their dream cake is, and... You know, if we're all honest with each other, it's... Lately, people just want something very simple, you know? Right? I mean, just very simple. People are like, "Do you do that textured stuff?" You know, "I really like the texture." You know, just something small. You know, everybody says that now. "Can you do the cake without the icing?" You know, I think that is still my number one question from everybody. And so it does go by, the consults go by faster. But I feel like more bakers can do those, so I have to work a little extra to get them to make the sale. So usually, towards the end of the consult, I'll say, "If you book within a few days, I'll give you 10% discount." You know, they don't know what I was gonna charge them, but I'll just give you that discount. People love a discount. So I'll do that, which usually works, and usually I get them to put a deposit down. And then now, I tell them, obviously, that I'll move that, I'll move that date whenever they need it. But I am selling cakes right now, which is good. Not the first week and a half, everybody, I think, was panicking, but, you know, people still wanna get married, you know? Yeah, so I, I still am selling some. I'm still talking to people, even though I'm only going in to bake every other week, but, because I'm only doing samples. That's all, that's all we'll do right now, is samples. I won't bake anybody's anniversary tier or anything like that. What other questions do you have? I know somebody's gonna have some questions.
Oh, you're unmuteing me? Oh.
I am. I'm muted. Everybody's live.
So how do you go about upselling? Because can't you, like, usually when they're in person, there's like, there's lots of things that we can, like, pull from our space, that we're like, "How about this?" You know, and then they're like, ooh and ah.
You know, Instagram. I really feel like that's where brides go these days.
Yeah.
Listening to that? Everybody like, "Oh, my God, I saw, in October, you did this cake on Instagram, and I loved it." I feel like that's where brides are looking right now. I really do. So Instagram is where we put a lot of cakes, and of course, lately, it's just, we just recycle the same cakes that, you know, have so many pictures of cakes, that we just put, "People think they're new." You know?
Bring back the Bridgeman Fountains. I'm kidding. You'll have to display more that way.
Yeah. I know. Well, you know, I, I really feel like what is gonna happen, this is my personal prediction, is now everybody is starting to bake from home, and everybody is starting to do things themselves that they wouldn't normally do. I mean, I gave myself a haircut today. Pretty good, right? You know? But I never, ever, ever would have ever attempted this, if, you know, ever. But now, I'm like, you know, I just saved 150 dollars. Not too bad. I could probably do this a few more times, right? But I feel like that may be what's happening with people baking right now. And so I feel like maybe this textured, semi-naked stuff is gonna go away, and we're gonna have to wow them with, like, stuff that actually tastes good again, which I am thrilled about. Like, let's get some piping happening. Let's get some lame... Stand, sure. You want it to start on fire, absolutely, spinning, whatever, lighting up, yeah, 12 feet tall. Yeah, something that you can't do at home. So I feel like we're gonna have to wow them, and I feel like this is where I'm hoping. This is what I'm hoping will happen. Somebody asked if I'm charging for the consultation. I do not charge for the case, consultation. I do charge for the samples, but I do not put the fee towards the cake. Sorry. Too bad. Yeah. That fee goes to the dollar 39 we have to pay now for the gallon of gas, you know? Ouch. And, you know, just baking, baking the cakes. And the samples are pretty easy, too. We did them, so you know, we do a basic butter cake and a basic chocolate cake, and I'll give you my secret recipe for red velvet, which is some of the butter and some of the chocolate and some of the red food coloring. You know, we put some of that in there, so that we're really, it's really fast to do and easy to do. And it's not really costly, you know, a lot of stuff. You know, I used to make a raspberry preserves and stuff. Now I just freeze the fresh raspberries and crumble them up right in the ganache, which is so nice and so easy. Oh, my God, why didn't I do that years ago? Yeah.
I think there's a lot of things that we're coming up with now that we're like, "Oh, my gosh, this is really obvious, this is right there."
I mean, this, this past year, I've had the opportunity to, to completely redo everything that I have wanted to change in the last decade, you know? And it was, it was a lot of pressure, because, you know, I had a lot of complaints for the last decade, like, "Why are we doing it like this?" Or, "Why can't we do this? And why is the industry like this?" Okay, well now... Okay, what are you gonna do about it? And so that's, that's kind of what we did this time around, is we decided to have a different definition of success, like a millennial. People think I'm crazy about this, too, but I was, remember, I was in a car on the way to some conference with another decorator who was from Australia, and I don't remember where we were, because I work so much. And I don't remember where we were because I work so much and who knows where I was at the time. But anyway, she said, people were talking about success. And she said, well, what's your definition of success? And I'm like, you know, I got, you know, I got to save money and I got to put it in the bank and I gotta, I gotta retire and I got, you know, I gotta, I gotta work and I gotta work some more and then I gotta work some more. And then after I'm done working, I'm going to work again. And then, you know, sometimes there's weekends and I got to fill them up with work. Um, and she said that her definition of success was being able to work during the day in her pajamas. I'm sorry, guys. No worries. So I, I thought, well, God, what an idiot. I mean, that was my initial thought. And then I thought, you know, who's to say I'm not the idiot? Right? I mean, it was such a big aha moment, like, God, why am I working so hard? It's not like at the end you get credit, like, oh, you worked yourself nearly to death. So, um, when Ryan and I were, you know, starting this, we all, we, we sat down and we just listed our, our rules, our requirements for it. And that was it. A life, a work-life balance. So that's what the goal is now. And the online consultation really helps that because I don't have to be at the bakery.
Do you do a lot via phone or is it all Zoom?
I always do it on Zoom. Sometimes people want to have like an initial call and then, you know, it obviously works the same. And I, um, I try to do pricing as easy as I can. I've built everything in to it. There's no extra cost to anything. So the per serving, my per serving price is higher than a lot of people around here. But I'm hoping that they'll, they'll come up to reality and I won't drop it. So sometimes I, I lose them initially just with that because they're like, how much? How much? But I mean, it's just like anything, if that's your first question, it's, it's, we're probably not the right place for you, you know? Our prices are very reasonable. I, I really do feel like we're exactly in line. Everybody else, you know, not grocery stores, but other quality bakers for sure.
Is there anybody on the line that's currently doing online consultations? Or is this something new for everybody basically starting now?
We were starting them. We've only done one or two, but we've been doing the phone ones because of the, um, COVID-19 where we couldn't do the onsite ones. But with the samples, we're actually making them come in and get the samples first. So they stop in, we can hand them the samples because our bakery is still open. We, um, do wholesale, so we're open for that. And we, in Minnesota, were able to keep our two retail locations open. So they come in, pick up the samples and then we set up an appointment with them after that. And they can either just do a phone one or they can do a Zoom meeting. And, you know, I kind of was going this direction, but didn't have the motivation to go any further because I was busy until now. And I realized, my daughter got married last year and she did almost all of her wedding online. In fact, she ordered her wedding dress online. So that's the way brides are going.
I mean, you could buy a house from your couch. Buy a wedding cake. That never made sense to me.
Um, we have been doing wedding samples to go for a while and we'll let people get up to four for free. And it's just basically, they're much smaller than yours, Bronwyn. They're like just six small samples of cake and then six of our fillings that they can mix and match however they want. Um, and they can have up to four in an in-person consultation, but obviously there's been an upswing in the to-go ones until the sheltering started. Now we're not doing anything at all. But then they can taste it at their own time. And then when they're ready to do anything via email or phone or, you know, I'm still waiting for the first person to want to Zoom, but they all seem pretty content with the email and phone because they're just going to our website or emailing us a reference and we're quoting it that way.
Some people, I mean, I always have, I always give them a sketch because I, I felt like when I did a consultation, that's what people always wanted. And I felt like that's, uh, really what, even what we had to sell. And so I would draw the sketch. And so if they, you know, I would ask how, how many servings? And then, you know, how many tea, how many tiers? And then I would talk about tier height and then I would draw them a picture. And then people are, get all excited about the picture. You know, I'm like, well, how do you like this? And people are like, oh, that's exactly what I had in my head. You know, people get all excited and then they'll say, oh, could you do this? And as soon as you get them involved in it, then, then you know you, you got, um, you know, if they say, could you do one of the drips? Oh, I love the drips. I always say, I love the drips. Oh, I love the look of that semi naked. I love that. I, I love that.
Liar.
Right? We can do it with our eyes closed, left hand. You know, I do like, I, it is a nice, I feel like this is our moment to just relax a bit when we're decorating, right? So the sketch, so what happens then is I give them a sketch and it has all my handwritten notes on it. Um, I write their name, everything in pencil, like this one, I'll show you, like sizing and everything. And then I scanned it and then I use squares since I'm tiny. But in square, I can send them a picture of this. I can make them a file. I need a picture of this, my contract terms. I can send them a proposal. And then that, that gets emailed to them. And then this is always attached to them, always attached to their file. And this pretty much, I, after the meeting, I might add some more, but that's, that's my order, you know? I don't need a whole lot of information. I'm, I'm very visual because I always drew them anyway. Any kind of pictures that they sent, like this is my dream cake, then I'll attach those too. So everything gets attached to that proposal and then they either, and I'll put an expiration date on it. And if they approve the proposal, then it comes back to me, it sends me an email, goes right to my phone, ding. They accepted the proposal. I can pull it right back up and hit it and send it as an invoice and put a payment terms on it. And then all of that stuff is still attached. And I know that, I mean, y'all are all big now, but now I'm all, I get to experience all the timing now and it's nice. Anyway, that's how I do it.
Is there anything off limits when it comes to an online consultation? Like, is there anything where like, absolutely not, we're not doing that? Or I don't even know what that would be, to be quite honest, but is there anything that's like weird that has come up?
Um, you know, sometimes people, I mean, I think you always need to be conscious of what's going on behind you. So I always, I don't want to be right up on the screen and I definitely don't want to have the screen down here. Nobody wants to look up your, your face. There is a little button on Zoom that'll, that is like a refine your appearance. I don't know if y'all have found that yet. Really, I, I don't think really it does much, but I'm definitely pushing the button for sure. And you can also change your backgrounds. And I noticed like this is my computer, but on my iPad, when I pull up Zoom, I feel like it's, it's a lot more user friendly on an iPad. But you can change the background really funny. I mean, they give you options, like I could be talking to you from the beach. I know that Bernadette, you did that the other day. You had the RBA logo behind you, but it's really, it's kind of fun because then you could be like, oh, my God, I'm in the laundry room. I'm doing, there's laundry everywhere. What do I do? Well, just put the beach up or, you know, I have a picture of the kitchen. I could put that up. Not the pic, but like a picture of the bakery and then, look, look, I'm working. Put some flour, you know, like, oh, yeah, just take your apron off. All right. You know, so I would just say, be conscious of what's going on around you. The one thing that has been tricky is if I told somebody I'm at the bakery and I'm really at home, um, you know? And the dogs bark. That's a little harder to explain, like, oh, those are, those are our, uh, that's our, our, you know, doorbell does that. I mean, you just kind of, you got to let the dogs out if you're at home. Now, so it doesn't matter now, everybody goes, you're at home, but, um, you don't want to, you don't want people to know you're at home. Let the dogs out.
Can I ask a question again about the, uh, going back to the consultations and doing the sketches and everything? Because I know that that's what really wins people over.
Even if you sketch them, the picture that they have just sent you, they're like, yes, you captured it.
Exactly. Yeah, I just copied it.
They just want you to, they want, they feel better when you're on their page.
But do you have concerns? And this was our concerns even when they were in person. We would never give them the physical drawing because we didn't want them to just then take it someplace else and go, okay, can you match this? And give me a better price? Because you know, that's what's happening. You know, so we say, we can't give you a physical copy of this until, you know, we receive a deposit. But we know they're taking pictures with their phone, but we just want to make it as complicated as possible for them to try to, you know, show their next baker. But now moving to this more digital format, are you more concerned that that's just going to happen more?
You know, if they are going to do it, it's going to be an asshole or they're going to be an asshole. And you're not going to prevent them from doing that. But I kind of played to, I just sent this email yesterday. Because I sent the same thing because I did this crazy ridiculous sketch, you know? But she had sent me a sketch from another baker. So I didn't look at the other sketch when I made my own design. But then, at the very, the very last sentence, I can't find it here easily, but the very last sentence I said, "The design remains mine until you put down your deposit. So I would appreciate if you did it forward it onto up." This is my living, you know? As a gentle reminder, that's how I started the sentence. As a gentle reminder, don't be an asshole.
Don't you wish you could just say everything that you're thinking to some of these people?
But I, yeah, I know, right? But I do, on a sketch like that, and I'll show you, because I don't include very many details. If they haven't put, if they haven't booked, I mean, another baker would be like, oh, I think I can pull it up here. Can y'all see it? You don't even know what color it is, dark color. I mean, there's, there's nothing on here. And if, and I always feel like if you choose to do this and undercut me, then go ahead. But, I mean, some people under, I mean, some people undercut you by a whole lot and then they think they're winning. But it just, it makes me want to draw an even bigger, more difficult sketch for them to get the next time. But there is no way to prevent that. And I thought about it every, I mean, I think about it every time. And when people used to come into the bakery, there was always someone in the showroom, kind of preventing them from taking pictures of the sketches. But you know darn well, the sketches are semi naked, touches of gold, maybe it's just a rustic look. You know, they're all the same. You know? No matter where you are in the country. So a lot of the sketches are like that. In some instances, then it's people, um, saying, here's what I like. I mean, this lady was like, I like Miss Kinsey Childs and I like, um, Halloween and I like, um, masks. You know, then you, yes, whatever. Yeah. That was a good question. I mean, people are going to be jerks. You can't prevent that. I wish we could, damn it.
We have a few more minutes left before the call ends. Does anybody else have any questions? Raise hands if you're already doing this or if it's something you're going to start implementing. Um, I know some are at the bakeries and some are not at bakeries anymore. Um, but we're just curious if you're already doing it or if you're going to start doing it and put that out there as an option.
I mean, you don't even have to have shoes on.
Right? How about some of the other bakers on here? Are you all doing this as an option right now? I'm going to unmute everybody again. There we go. How about ours? Is it something you're going to start doing?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to do more of it.
My question is, are you going to go back to face to face if you don't have to?
No.
I like the personal one-on-one at times.
I mean, when you do meet with somebody like that, then it is. I mean, I now meet with my friends like this, you know, it feels like getting together. You know, we do our book club on here now and.
I have a question. Are you just cakes? Like, we're a full-service bakery, so we offer like wedding favors and stuff like that. So when I meet with them in person, it's much easier for me to upsell wedding favors or shower favors, you know, the cookies. We do King Cake in New Orleans.
It's the same thing. I mean, you can have your list of questions and say, now, what are you doing for your favors? Haven't been picked out yet. Well, here are my recommendations. You know, you can still, you can still do the same thing and you can have pictures of them. You can have the screenshot. You can have the pictures already on the side. I mean, I really do feel like the iPad is easier to do that because then you can have it just there. But yeah, now we're just cakes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, whatever.
The appointments, I'd really like to switch over to this for sure, are the ones that are doing just donuts for their weddings now. It's like, I hate it when they book an appointment and they come in and you have samples ready and they get there and it's like, oh, no, we're just going to get donuts. It's like, well, we can do that in 10 minutes. We don't need an hour appointment for that.
One unexpected thing that I have come to love about it is when people cancel, it's not as big a deal. You know? Since it shows up on people's calendars and it sends them reminders that there is an appointment, usually they will call to cancel or reschedule. If they're just jerks, open the meeting and walk away and wait for somebody to say, hi, is anyone there? Hello? Whatever you do. So that's, it is kind of nice, you know? And then I wait, my thing is I wait six minutes. You're not on there within six minutes, forget it. I know, it was longer when I started, but now it's down to six. You know, it's funny, most people, I think more people show up to a Zoom meeting than an actual consultation. And it's fun when you get like a bride from Mississippi and then the groom is in Dallas and then their parents and then you have a bunch of people. Really, it can, it can get fun. Get everybody excited and you know they're going to, then, then it's, it's an experience that everybody can share that they wouldn't have been able to share otherwise.
Do you find that the time of the consultation is about the same as when it was in person?
So much shorter. So there's a 45-minute limit on Zoom. So there's a 45 minute limit on Zoom and the only time that I have broken that is with my girlfriends or with my book club. Isn't that weird? Yeah, but it's, it's just short and sweet and wonderful.
Bronwyn, do you have automated messages that send like, "Don't forget, here's your cake appointment." And then after it's over, one that says, "Thanks so much for joining us. Your sketches will be sent out soon." Or anything automated that kind of even makes it that much simpler?
I mean, I tell them that they're going to receive, I, I tell them that they're going to I don't even talk about the consultation usually. I just say, "I'm going to send them." Which does cut out a bunch of time and then I don't have to be face to face and I don't have to see their face. Like, "This is going to be $75." And then they cry. I don't have to see that. So I, I do like that. I say, "You'll receive a proposal very soon and, you know, and then that's it." But their calendar will remind them about the meeting, which is cool. And I have set an extra reminder on my calendar so that I really odd time. And it's like, "Oh my God, I'm at the grocery store. I gotta get to my meeting." And, but you can have a meeting in your car. You just change to the background. You know? That's the best part.
So we only have about five minutes left. Does anybody have any other questions or great ideas that you'd like to share with the group? No, nothing right now? Which is okay too. I think we're all still kind of learning this new process. So as we go along, if you'd love to, you know, send your emails to me if you have great ideas, I can always share them with the group that was online today for sure. So Bronwyn, thank you so, so much for doing this. You're always like a joy and always make us laugh. So we always appreciate it. And thank you to everyone being online today. And if you don't have any other questions or anything, we'll end the call right now. But be on the lookout. We're going to kind of try and do these town hall meetings at least once a week or once every other week to kind of keep everybody together while we're all kind of doing this weird, strange thing that we're doing at the moment. So, so thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it. Have a great rest of your day and have a good Easter.
Y'all take care.
Bye. Bye-bye.